So. The site plan review for One Smith Road was continued?
I think the first thing we need to do is to have a motion to allow Kristen to do remote.
Oh, yep.
And then a roll call.
Um, would anyone?
Make a motion, Kristen, attend via remote.
I'll make a motion to allow Kristen Altred to participate remotely.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we have to vote.
Roll call.
Okay, anyone want to start?
Doug, yes.
Bruce, yes.
Aye.
Paul, yes.
Steph, yes. Does Kristen vote in this one?
No.
I don't think so.
And then, do we?
I think we need an alternate.
Who's missing? Oh, so we have a full board.
We have a full board, but Liz could still sit at the table.
Oh, yeah, of course, absolutely.
Yeah, Liz, come on up if you want. No pressure.
This is one time you can't say anything.
Is he not coming today? Is Glenn coming?
Glenn was here, yeah. You can come sit with us. Oh, we don't have Glenn's here. You can come sit up here with me.
While you guys are waiting, just so you know, my travel should calm down. I'm sorry, I'm dialing in, but thank you. And I should be back and there consistently.
All right. If now's the appropriate time, I'll make a motion that we continue the One Smith Road hearing, tax map two sixteen oh three five oh oh oh. Continue it to, I move that we continue it to October.
October second, sir.
It's October second?
Yes, sir.
October second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just wondering, Mark, did they give any indication that they will be ready then?
Yeah.
Are they close?
Email conversation, because Ryan Lavelle is out of town, I believe he got married and is on a sunny moon, that his, that, yes, that they will have a site plan ready. They actually requested October 2nd.
So they're still operating as a business currently?
Is that a statement or?
I'm asking, does anybody know?
I don't.
Hard to know.
I think we.
We need a roll call.
Yeah, any other discussion or people ready to vote?
Anything else?
Nope.
No comment, Bruce?
This time, no.
Do you want to start, Doug?
Doug, yes.
Brett, yes. Bruce, yes.
Doug, aye.
Paul, aye.
Steph, aye. Kristen?
Kristen, Kristen, aye.
I think next on the agenda is the budget. Do you have like a general synopsis of the budget process?
Yep. Did you want to do the, I'll do it since I'm in the room, Kristen, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll comment after you give a summary.
Okay.
Anyone have extra readers?
I'll explain, I'm sorry, sir.
Just extra readers.
Oh, I'm wearing mine, I'm wearing mine at the moment, sir. I'll explain the pieces of paper on top of the budget. Now, you'll look at the budget and it's sort of on a really big piece of paper because I tried to print it on a normal piece of paper and you really couldn't read it. So I felt the best course of action was to give you a nice large print of it. The first page that you'll see on top is just a budget report. And it has the document used to create the budget. The next document that is underneath that is my wage summary. I don't know if anybody's watched the last select board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And that's an explanation of what went on there and I'll go into more detail on that. The next one under that is a bill from T E C. And that will become more relevant as the conversation goes on when I go line by line of the budget.
Is there any discussion in these pages at all or are we just moving forward?
I just want to explain what that documentation was so when I refer to it, once I go through the budget, you know what document I'm talking about. So you'll look at line one of the budget. That represents myself. And that's why you'll see the increase that you see of six point six zero. Would that wage increase in the three percent for the next coming year? That is the percentage of increase. And I'd refer to the document, the second document in your packet on top as to why that is.
Yeah, I just, just to clarify, I want to make sure everybody understands that that is not a six point, six percent wage increase per se. The way it was calculated last year, there was one rate at the beginning of the year. I think, you know, before Mark started, there was another rate for a portion of the year. And then there was a third rate. And so the final rate for that year that was built in and approved last year is what we need to use as a basis to budget for this year. So the total is a six point six percent increase, but it is not, you know, it's not a wage increase.
Not the only increase you'll see and there's a cola, percent, that's what we were told to work off of? Is there any questions before we move on to the next line?
So on total salary on the second page, you've got fifty four eight sixty four and possible overtime of three thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was a document that was used to actually create last year's budget.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and I included that to give some explanation of that line so you'll have more of a total understanding of what happened.
All right, I haven't read that yet.
And so what I did to help offset some of the increase in the first line to, you know, keep our budget as level as possible and within the, you know, in the best interest of the town is, and because that overtime line hasn't been used to the full extent is I went ahead and lowered that. So that's why the next line is minus sixty two percent and offsets some of the increase that you seen this in the first line.
That overtime line.
Sorry, Mark.
You're fine, you know.
I'm jumping in.
No, we're gonna do great. No, no, you jump in anytime that you want. The overtime line has been used, but here's one of the budgetary challenges that we're facing is that items have not really been assigned properly to line items. And this is ubiquitous across many, many, many budgets. And I had a very long sit down with Julie Stevens about how this department is going to move forward and correcting that. And we want to get that corrected and we want to get on the right path budgetarily. I've had a long sit down, I talked to her about how applicants, those accounts are going to work, how funds are going to come out of those accounts. And how we need to budget properly and take line items properly. I've gone through, I have all my paychecks from the day that I started and I've used, I checked a while, this is a few months ago, approximately like a thousand dollars of overtime line. And that really isn't represented here. So knowing that figure, Kristen and Kristen felt confident that we could lower that line by a thousand dollars and still have budgeted properly for that line.
Which would lead me to a question of the past, past period, because of the discrepancy of your pay. It was noted at the select board meeting that you needed to be compensated on a regular pay for a certain amount of money. And reflective in both the new budget and the old budget is an overtime figure. And nothing was mentioned about overtime. Are you entitled for compensation for overtime you haven't been paid?
No, 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 no. I have been paid properly on the overtime.
You have?
Absolutely, I have. And it's strange how that can work sometimes. Meaning, you know, if you have a holiday and then I get slammed with, you know, forty five hours after that holiday, but you haven't worked forty hours to get the overtime line, you know what I'm saying? So you're not, so that line is just going to fluctuate from year to year. But I dug through my pay stubs, this is a few months back and I sort of, where are, because nothing had been pulled out of that line. So I want to know whether we are budgeting properly for that line. Just did some quick math, right, you know, and it came up to like eight hundred dollars, but that was a few months ago. So I feel safe at saying a thousand dollars. And I feel even safer saying that we can take that line down by a thousand.
Okay, but I want to make sure you're getting what you're.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not worried about it. I feel very fortunate to work with a great group of people, to work with a town that I love. And if we're talking twenty dollars, I'm not, it's not, just not worth the conversation really. I feel that I've been more than generously, with Kristen's efforts, compensated for what is right.
Well, yeah, and I just, yeah, I just want to say, you know, because we haven't had consistent support in the town administration over the last few months, things, you know, obviously have fallen through the cracks. We had that worksheet that Mark put in the packet, we had approved wages last year, went through the budget committee, it went through the select board, went through our board, et cetera. It was just never implemented because we haven't had consistent administration, I guess. So we were just remedying that. And I think, Mark, you know, in the next year, if these numbers stay what they are, you know, we'll just, we'll have to stay under that amount for overtime. And if for some reason next year looks a little bit different, we'll have to talk about how to, you know, move things around so that you don't go over that.
Yeah, I feel, yeah, well, I feel that if we get on a better budgetary track and we're pulling things out of line items, I should be able to get an update of that six months through the year. But that was one of the issues, that it wasn't being tracked properly. I shouldn't have to go dig through my pay stubs to find out. I should be able to look budgetarily and know. I should be given a budget update on the actual. And I'm pretty confident, we've had a semi-busy year with a few things and I'm fairly confident that we can stay under that number. Any other questions on those, on that line? So FICA, Medicare, New Hampshire Retirement, professional training?
I have a question, retirement.
Sure.
Yeah.
Why are there two separate percentages under retirement?
So, I believe. Yeah. Oh, sorry. That's a state. Are you, are you talking about the January through June, July through December?
Looking on page two, retirement, it's got thirteen point five three percent at thirty six oh nine, twelve point seven five at thirty five ninety three. Why two separate amounts? Why not just one percentage? One figure.
That's why they do it, I know. When you do the math, you just use one figure. Yeah.
Well, but that, but that's changed, right? I mean, that's, that's the way the state sets it. And that was for twenty twenty five, for twenty twenty six, it's the twelve point seven five percent.
Okay, so they've gone.
For the, for the whole year.
Okay.
It's gone down a little bit. The reason that the percentages look like they're going up more is I believe they were not calculated correctly last year. They didn't take, they didn't take everything into account. So we should, we should check on those with the budget committee to make sure that we're calculating those right. But when I did the math, it looked like they left out overtime and that should still be subject to FICA. So that's why that percentage is higher.
The budget committee gave us these lines over here on the side right here. That's the table that was used for this year.
Okay, so they went with just one figure?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And just so you know, for common knowledge, those numbers are different for firefighters and they're also different for police officers. Professional training lines, we're going to leave that at five hundred. We really haven't pulled anything out of that as of yet. I think we should start doing so next year. Now, we get to the engineering and ser, any questions on that professional training line? Engineering and surveying, so that's why I included the bill from T E C. And that represents some work that he's done for the town of Brentwood. Okay, so this is what I'm talking about when we need to budget properly. Because if I had to pull that out of a line, which the only line in our budget right now is a hundred dollars for this year, we're going to go right way in the negative on that line. So when we have engineers that do, you know, you request engineers to do work, we need to be cognizant of what line. So next year, we made it a thousand dollars. But we made it a thousand dollars before I ever saw this bill.
What is the bill?
That was for the comment letter regarding Tonya Lane. So.
Thirty-one hours?
And there was some discussion about how it should be paid, correct?
Yeah, what I would like to do at this moment is stick to the budgetary conversation because that is an agenda item later on this evening that we can definitely talk about. But I would really like to focus on the, if that's okay with.
No, that's fine.
So what we have budgeted is a thousand dollars. So even next year, if this happened, we still couldn't afford to pay this bill.
Yeah, that was going to be my question is, it's a significant increase, but it still doesn't necessarily cover what, I mean, what's tricky is it, there's the potential for unexpected costs here.
Is this an anomaly?
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah. But that money still has to come from somewhere.
Right.
Right, so.
We do have a little bit of a dilemma here and this is, I, you know, we had a discussion last year. I advocated to keep money in, for example, on the legal line. I don't remember offhand what we had in the engineering line, but things were cut in the budget process that we knew that we might have costs for. And I was told not to worry about it, that there would be, I guess, you know, general funds for those kinds of things. So now we have a budget cap and those funds were not in our budget last year. So it kind of puts us in a difficult spot.
I did voice that concern to Julie to say, hey, look, at the end of the budgetary process, I think all departments need to get an updated spreadsheet on what was actually approved by the select board and the budget committees. Well, you know what I mean? So I can give that to all of you, so you know what's in every one of those lines. And I didn't feel that that information stream sort of got back to me at the end of that budgetary, the end of the year and the final budgets and what was appropriated at town meeting. So I think that's important, that that actually come back to the departments so they know what they can and cannot spend.
So, I mean, I've only been on the board for three years or so. I'm not super familiar with how often we have requests for kind of unique engineering services. Not to put you guys on the spot, but those who have been on the board longer, is this something that comes up often enough?
It is a bit of an anomaly, but it does happen. I mean, I think you need to budget properly for expenditures that you as a board can justify in making.
One thing we've talked about for probably eighteen months is a kind of recodification of our road standards, road standards. And so something like that, we need some engineering expertise to accomplish that goal. I mean, that's just one, one item that I can think of.
Yeah, I mean, should we consider coming up with a ballpark number of hours we'd like to budget for and we can reverse engineer an hourly rate for them that seems reasonable and do it that way?
We need to do this ASAP, like they are working on budgets right now. And it is expedient that we get this sorted out. I mean, looking at that bill, I mean, I could easily, in my mind's eye, justify a five thousand dollar line. I could easily do that.
Right, on the other hand, though, there's some of that work we can do as a board ourselves. And due to the fact that we're new to this new budget cap this year, you know, perhaps we do our due diligence and come up with some ideas and then, you know, ask for appropriation next year to rewrite something that might need rewriting. And then we'd have to propose that for, well, that would be under subdivision, so we wouldn't have to go to town meeting for that. But we'd have to hold public hearings to discuss the changes we are contemplating. And right now, we don't have a real structure for that change. I mean, we may not need to largely change for our road standards, but it seems like we could wait another year with all the pressure this year to, you know, begin a new budget process.
No, I would, I would agree with that statement.
The other thing that we've talked about, and I think is part of the issue this year with this, with this cost, is that we've, you know, been told sort of after the fact that the fees are not set high enough to cover post-construction inspections. And I think the board was under the impression that that was happening. And I think, you know, some of what we asked for was basically to go back and look at things that we thought had been inspected. So part of this might also be, we need to raise fees because that's, that's not an expense that we should have routinely. But that work needs to be done, so it, we need to look at our fee structure.
Yeah, the fee structure really goes to pay for the engineering work for a subdivision. Any work that the town engineer puts into that subdivision, the applicant covers. This line would be specifically designed for things that the applicant doesn't cover. When you, when you've asked Chris to go out and redo work that he's already done once, I can, I don't believe that we can charge the applicant for that. That's something that the planning board has to bear the responsibility for.
And I think that's something that's more appropriate to discuss under a non-public, which will more than likely entertain doing that this evening.
Yeah, I, I guess I was referring to like the driveway permit process and having a fee for the applicant that covers post-construction inspection and report.
Very, very good point, and something's been suggested to us. And we as a board can do that through a public hearing process, that is not part of our zoning ordinance. So we can internally as a board, hold a public hearings on fee changes and implement them with a couple of public hearings.
Right, I know the board isn't aware of this quite yet, but I've, I've sort of, I have one left to go, but I've redrafted all our applications and cleaned them all up and kind of rewritten them. I'm going to have to go back in there and change some of the fees associated with, say, a butter notifications because the mailing has gone up over ten dollars. So that's something that, that we can do. I don't know if you have to have a public hearing for such a thing, Mr. Greenwood, if you're going to go up on the application fees? You should, okay, so that's something that we're going to have to work on as well.
Yeah, let's, I know we've got a lot going on, but let's prioritize the fee structure for maybe, maybe looking at that in November so that we have something in place for next year.
Fair. Let's just get through this one line, I know.
No, we're gonna, we're, sorry.
Should it be more than a thousand? Are you comfortable with that? Absolutely, sir. Turn your mic, thank you, thank you, sir.
The town of Kingston has grappled with this over the years. They, for about ten years, they had a five thousand dollar engineering line because they had run into a couple of instances where they needed engineering expertise unassociated with an application that they could charge it to. They kept it in and for a number of years it didn't get used. And the budget committee, it became a miserable argument point and so they eventually removed it. And I only, I only say this because there are some budgetary things that you can't foresee. And if you're, if you're going to rely on a budget committee whose goal is to streamline the budget process, that's what's going to happen. The minute they see a line that's, that's funded and doesn't get used for one or two years, they're going to come after that line, sure than anything.
That's, yeah, that's what's happened with legal. And I would, and I would put this current expense, and I know this is kind of a separate discussion that we need to have, but it's, to me, it's in the same bucket as legal because it's not, we didn't ask them to go, you know, rewrite our road guidelines or something proactive that we would, that we would budget for. This was a problem that we needed, you know, that we need to sort out. And we had money in the budget for problems that come up and it was taken out, so here we are.
I mean, even if that line was a hundred dollars and you attributed this bill to that line and it went way into the negative, you could justify asking for that line to be raised, right?
And there may be other strategies that we can employ as a board to not cause taxpayers to have to foot the particular bill that you're talking about. But I don't think this is the time right now to discuss the details of that option.
So leave the line as it is?
I think based on what Glenn said, I mean, we have to have some justifiable reason for asking for it. So the budget committee certainly, it's a reasonable, common sense approach that they may take to ask, what are you using it for? So if we get by town meeting, the proposed zoning changes that we're looking to implement this year, right after town meeting, we ought to start working on a list of, you know, projects that may require some engineering expertise and then use that as a reason for asking the town to spend more money in twenty twenty seven.
Maybe, this is a question, Paul, for the select board, or maybe, Mark, you can talk to Julie. When the legal line item, for example, was cut last year and I said, we can't predict that, we have needed legal assistance in the past from our attorney, we might need that money. And I was told, don't worry about it. And I asked, does that mean that there's a legal fund for the whole town and we don't need a line item in our particular budget? And I did not get a clear answer, but maybe that's the case that we all have access to the municipal attorney and there's a general budget for that?
Right, the town, the town does have a line item for legal. And the board of selectmen has suggested to us the last couple of years, allow any legal expenses that the board may incur to come out of that general legal.
True, I've assumed, or I'm assuming, that if there was any legal arising from planning board that it must have gone and been paid under that general town line.
It kind of makes sense.
Because it's only one dollar here.
Well, we used to, yeah, we used, well, we used to have.
We have used.
We used to have our own budget for it, but, okay, that's good to know, I'm glad to hear that. We used to have our own budget for it, but, okay, that's good to know, I'm glad to hear that.
I think Letty, Letty's audience wanted to talk, do you want to come up to the mic?
I'm just guessing, was I the one that said that, probably, since I think I was here? Yeah, so I think the thought was that if you have some sort of unexpected legal expense, that you could, there is a legal line that could cover that.
In the town's budget, certainly, general budget?
There's a, there's a legal, there's a whole legal department.
I guess we don't have the same situation for unexpected engineering expenses. I guess my personal opinion would be to be safe and budget a little, little extra, but I don't know.
I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but we do have a line item in here that's $5,263. Is there any, would we entertain coming out of the Rockingham Planning?
I think it serves us really well.
I think it does too, but, you know, your, your, your cap is 4%. Mark's making comment that we should do our due diligence in protecting ourselves with engineering and surveying fees. Rockingham Planning Commission is on a rampage right now to cut substantially. And it doesn't appear there will be beneficiaries from now until the next 10 years anyway. So it's not, I'm not saying it because I think it's the right thing to do, but it's there staring me in the face. Do you think we should think about that?
So what are the dues?
I, yeah, I had a similar thought, we need to be able to justify the benefit to the town from that line item. I said, I've had a similar thought, you know, can we justify that line item going forward? It's a good, it's a good question.
What are the dues? Can, can someone explain?
We kind of, we kind of skipped ahead on the budgetary process.
You're asking for a solution to that line. I'm looking at that being my solution, so I'm not trying to skip ahead.
No, 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 I, I, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, we can, we can run down the rest of them, then we can answer Paul's question.
How much is the line, sir?
No, I'm, I'm asking what, what, I should, I, I see.
What do you get for the?
But, no, yes, what, 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 what do you get for those dues? That's what I was asking.
Mr. Greenwood, could you add some comment to that?
I, I think that's fair, and I'd like to hear your perspective, whether or not you think that's a reasonable thought process.
The Planning Commission provides a pretty wide range of services. The town, from my perspective of late, has, has benefited most from the transportation element at Planning Commission. And the transportation element at the Planning Commission is paid for through federal funds, not through the dues that we pay. The dues that we pay are used for their other program elements, their education element, their support of the projects of regional impact process that they do. If, if a town declares a project to have regional impacts, they have a committee that's, goes about providing input to communities from that perspective, that kind of thing. That is all done through the dues that they receive from individual communities. It's, so from a personal perspective, I think that funding the commission for both activities, so using the federal funds that are given so that our communities get transportation support, is really beneficial. But I think that the process, the processes that they do beyond transportation are also beneficial to communities. And in the, in the instances where we've wanted a roadmap, and, you know, their GIS guy over there is incredible, and he prints us out a roadmap. And that, that map, if you went to a professional engineering firm to provide to you, would be 300 bucks. And Robert just gives it to us. So I think there, I think you could, you risk being penny wise and pound foolish.
And, and part of the, as we learned from Dave Walker tonight, you know, he's coordinating all these projects for the whole region. So we kind of have to think about the greater good of the communities in general and to have the staff to represent our town along with other towns. I mean, our town with the project at South Road that's being advocated for, this is, this is pennies.
Well, Dave, everything Dave does is paid for by the federal government. Our, our dues don't, don't pay for, Dave, don't pay for Scott Bogal over there.
But, but our dues allow us to participate and be on the committees and part of the commission to be in a position to advocate for the transportation projects.
Mr. Moreno.
Yeah, and, and if I could just kind of add, add my two cents here. I, I, I do think it would be a mistake to, to pull the, the dues from the budget. I, I think that we, we should continue to participate in RPC. I, I think it's really important for us as a board not to lose sight of the forest for the trees and really think long-term. E- especially with the 10-year plan and the, the project that we're pushing for on South Road and, and 125. The RPC is really going to bat for us and advocating for us. It's not their fault that, that the, you know, that with the state's budgetary shortfalls and the DOT is, you know, not, is what DOT's recommendations. That's not the RPC's fault, the RPC is actually really like, really going to bat for us. And I just, I think it would be a mistake for us to, to thank them by saying goodbye. I, I, I think that would be a mistake. It, it may be satisfying in the short term to save some money, but I think in the long term, it's a mistake.
Yeah, we're also, by being members, we, a, a benefit we get is certain grant programs. Like, for example, they, the RPC recently completed a safety action plan, which was step one of the Safe Streets For All Grant Program, which covers all communities encompassed in their region. So because we're part of one of their member communities, that unlocks potential future funding that we have access to. If we weren't a member and we wanted to pursue that grant program, we'd have to fund our own safety action plan first, which would be tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, in, in the long run, it could cost us a lot more, so, yeah.
And I do not want anybody to think I was advocating, it's just, it's looking me straight in the face.
I'm gonna call the RPC.
You can't believe how strongly Doug Fennan was fighting against it.
But I, but I do think, I mean, we're, you know, there are always gonna be tough questions about budgets, and we need to be able to justify line items. So I think it's an important question to ask, and I'm glad to hear, you know, that, that people have good justification for it. That it's a value to our town and that.
I do too.
It's important to keep.
I guess we don't have, we can't raise the engineering line more if we're keeping that.
Well, that's a, that's a good point, we have to.
These bills are, these bills are going to get paid. I'm just bringing to light where the, the budgetary process could, we want to be cognizant of that.
A very good point, very good point. And we may be in a position where we have to take, take one of those bills and go before the select board and ask for money.
Yeah, I mean, when doing a budget, I, I want to bring as much information and things to light so you aren't shocked at the end of the day. That we all are aware of our budget and responsible for it, and that's really my, my goal this evening. So we just got legal services, so we're gonna leave that at a dollar. And a town planner that represents a 2.5% increase for Mr. Greenwood. He just needs to, once that is approved, provide the town of Brentwood with a new contract.
I'll, I'll go on record as saying I don't care if we don't do this. I mean, I have a fairly laid-back approach to my contract with this town and generally go several years without raising.
Well, that was my point, I think over five years, you've probably had about a 0.63.
I was gonna say this.
It's fairly low, I, I've, I've been chastised by people for doing it that way, and so I.
Well, yeah, because, you know, what we don't want to do is have a big increase at, at some point, right? Because we need to have kind of, you know, consistent and predictable, so I would rather.
Yeah, maybe we should look at this a little closer and raise that a little bit more. Because if, if the town is accepting a cost of living raise of 3%, this is two and a half, and they're entertaining a 4% increase overall. So you know that wages are gonna go from 1% to 4%. We've got a gentleman that does an immense amount of work for us and literally has not been compensated for it for at least five years. And we're gonna have to look at.
If, if you're talking about me, that's not true. I, there was an increase to my line last year.
I think before that, there were probably three years.
It was a long time before that, yes. But last, last year, John Morgan browbeat me, I gave a figure that showed an increase.
And, and, you know, and I, I know you don't like to talk about a lot of things you do for this town outside the, the planning board duties here, but I think it might be helpful to people listening to understand, you know, what help you provide other boards. I mean, starting with the ZBA, with the town administration in general, you give a lot of advice to.
We are a team.
A team, right, but it doesn't, I think it's beneficial for you to list some of those things that you do because we all, we know what you do for, for other boards.
Glenn, Mr. Greenwood is an integral part of what I do every day. Every Wednesday, he's an integral part of what goes on in this town office. Anybody with any question when it comes to planning or otherwise, comes to see Mr. Greenwood. We could not function without him. I'm gonna repeat that again, we could not function without Mr. Greenwood.
You, you can, and because I'm not young anymore, you.
Turn it off.
And not in the very far future, I've got to say.
What he does is.
We, we rely on you for, for basically reviewing all of our plans.
I, I, I know that Kristen has a very wise approach to this in that she doesn't want to be stuck in four years with a, you know, a big raise. What I would say is, in four years, I'll likely be dead, and you will be looking for something to replace me. And, and the board should look very closely at whether a planner here one day a week is a wise thing to do.
Well, it works because you have the expertise and you have the knowledge of the town.
Been here for 35 years. But when I go, the town, the town, your 4,000 people, you should have a planner who's here more than one day a week.
We're, we're learning like from the town administrator, it takes them pretty much a year just to get their feet under them and understand the process.
You're not. You're not allowed to die, I don't allow you to.
I would love that to be the case.
It's not gonna happen.
My recent history says that is not true.
You're not going anywhere anytime soon, sir.
It's just a, I say that because it's just a truism. I'm, I'm going to probably work another four years, five years, and beyond that, I'm not. And we should consider what that means.
Yeah.
We could probably go to some other towns to find out towns of similar size, what, what it takes to run their planning department.
Well, we will not be the only ones. Kingston, Kensington, Kingston, Kensington. And Newfields, we'll all be in the same boat as we will be.
Well, if you're happy with this.
So I know, yeah, we want to keep moving, I think the bottom line for me is, I don't, I, I, I want to have some increase in there because we need to keep pace with inflation, and we don't want to have a big jump in the future. That'll be difficult, so let's just keep an increase.
Moving along, everybody good? Master plan, we are doing a town warrant article again this year for an increase to the master plan fund. So that's why that line's a dollar. Oh, I changed the printing line to printing slash books, and I increased it by $200. We spent about $220 on books. That's on the agenda, so I'll just grab that item now and we'll talk about it. I did the book order, that order sheet is in your other packet. I got three books, that will include an ebook for you.
I saw that.
Ms. Bedard wanted the other one, and I still have one ebook up for grabs. If nobody grabs it, I might just download it on my computer, but.
You'll love having it on the go.
No, what you can do is you can order a book, you get the hard book, plus a code to download an ebook version of it.
You missed out? No, I, I like the red soft.
You're gonna get one. Oh, hun, everybody's gonna get a book. I just ordered three of them with the ebook, I ordered three of them with the ebook code, that's all I'm saying.
Is Kristen taking an ebook also?
I, whoever wants.
I'm old fashioned, I like the book.
You like the, the book as well?
It's, it's basically for the kids, Paul, the new tech kids.
I get it.
The techies. Master plan, books, advertising and notices, that's a dollar. Registry expenses, we're gonna leave that at 60. We just talked about the planning dues. Miscellaneous is 50 bucks, postage is a dollar, office supplies 225. Most of our office supplies are already covered in the general budget, it's just when I need specialty stuff. Like I had to order a bunch of 11 by 17 paper, a couple reams of that for the posters. It's very, it's, it's minor stuff. I do need a new chair, and I will get a new chair.
You've got seven chairs, seven, eight chairs?
Well, let's not talk about that. That's what ends up happening, all the garbage chairs come in here and someone sneaks off with a good chair. I have the tact, sir, to not do that. Oh, there, there was one line that I would like to talk about, and I would like to potentially add to the budget. And that would be a grants line. So I talked to Julie about how we can better track the grant money that's coming in and the grant money that's going out. And the best way to do that would be create a grant line within your budget. You can put a dollar on that line, it's just a placeholder. So when I submit these bills for like resilience, okay, I submit them to the state of New Hampshire, okay? We pay them out of the general fund, but I'd like to track it in that line so that line would just go negative, 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 negative until we get checks. Now, the checks that I've seen come in from the state of New Hampshire, they, they don't pay that invoice. They send you a whole block of money, like they send you 10 grand, or, you know what I mean? It's interesting how they pay. So in order to track that properly, it'd be nice to have a line right in your budget where you could pull money in and pull money out, and you can easily track it. Because right now, it's not easily trackable.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I support that.
Is it hard to add a line, or, you know, should we just change the master plan line to master plan and? And?
Well, I'd like to leave the master plan line alone. Well, I'd like to leave the master plan line alone unless we want to keep, we might run into a point where we don't have to create when we ask the voters for money.
Appropriations.
Appropriations. There might, we might reach a point where we can just do that through the budgetary process. But that's completely up to you. I could change the title of that line. And call it master plan slash grants.
What, once the resilience program is over, which will be over in the next six months, plus or minus, we won't have any other grants in progress at that point.
Planning for the future, Mr. Stevens.
That's, that's why I'm getting, I thought the board of selectmen had a, like a grant writer line item in their budget.
That position was filled and is no longer filled.
Because there's no new money being appropriated.
Yeah, I, I'm just talking about the, the planning board.
Yeah, this is kind of just, it's a pass, it's a pass through.
Well, maybe for a starter.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kristen.
I said, I think this is just a pass, you're just proposing a pass through line item, basically.
Yeah, I, I just want to create a line where we can have some accountability. Because this has been an issue trying to track this and this would be an easy way to track it.
I think that's just common sense.
Did Julie recommend that?
Yeah. I suggested it and she says that's a perfect way of doing it.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
And I believe down at the bottom right hand corner, request line. Increase, the total increase is four point two seven.
Have you proposed this to Budcom yet?
I have submitted it to Julie. Everybody who has submitted budgets has done so as a draft version. We can make changes. That, that's what the, the purpose of this meeting is, is to make changes and hopefully to get you to, to, uh, someone to make a motion to approve the submitting of this budget.
I'll make a motion to the planning board adopt these, this proposed budget for the twenty twenty-six.
With the addition of a.
Creating a line item to speak to grants.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
We need a roll call.
Roll call.
I just, Steph, can I just pause for a sec? If there is any discussion, if people do have questions, if they have any concerns, if they feel like, you know, we have a Budcom meeting or a select board meeting, I guess, where we'll present our budget in October. If you anticipate having any concerns at that point, please, please bring them up now. Let's, you know, let's make sure everything's on the table.
Well, I do, actually. Now that you mention it, I do, now that you mention it. You know, our increase is four point two seven. Our cap is four percent. Overall. I mean, that's what you're gonna be confronted with, with, or I would anticipate you're gonna be confronted with that with Budcom and then the select board is going to be confronted with other departments to be over on the four percent. I think you're asking for them to entertain looking at it closer than they should.
Well, where, where would you propose cutting if you were to do that?
What's point two seven percent? I guess you'd have to figure out what the dollars are.
Well, the other, the other thing with this format, the way that it works, it rounds up percentages. I'll give you an example.
I added, I added decimal places because it was, like, if I hadn't done that, it would say four percent. But I wanted to see it in more detail, so I added the decimals.
Oh, okay.
So you feel comfortable with this, Kristen?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I was just gonna try to do the math real quick, like point two percent. Is what.
You think I'm just being crazy on this?
Uh, yes.
No, I, I think it's a. I think it's a, I mean, we're, we're a small budget across the town's total budget. I don't know what, yeah, what people are gonna, you know, what it, what the overall picture is going to be. What is it?
Three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Take it out of overtime.
Three hundred, after three hundred and twenty-five.
I, I would take it out of the engineering services because we already think that's too low anyway, so.
Might as well go for broke, eh?
Might as well just, that's my, that's my take.
Well, I think Brett makes a good ti, uh, point, too. You don't anticipate using a huge amount of overtime. If you're at fifteen hundred dollars at that, that puts us under on the budget. You think that's?
I think it says, no, it's eleven twenty-five.
It's eleven twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd rather pay Mark than T E C.
Okay, okay. So we look at T E C.
Both are gonna get paid.
Okay. I would not be objectionable to that.
I thi, I think that's, you know, it's respectful for us to propose something at the four percent. And, you know, that's a cap and I don't want to leave the impression that we're, you know, working our way up to the cap. It's just, you know, some things have changed. That's gonna bump us up a little bit. And now we're saying, let's, let's not go over that. So let's take a little bit, bit back out. And I hope that the select board and the Budcom will understand, like, we're not playing any games here. We're not asking for an extra few grands, expecting that something would be cut. This is a realistic, reasonable budget with modest increases that we think are necessary. And I hope that it's, you know, stays what we propose and, you know, that they accept what we propose.
I, I think your words are admirable. But I look at these figures and I look at the total down the bottom in comparison to other departments.
Can't do it.
I think the point two seven represents, what'd you say, three hundred and fifty dollars?
That's not my point, though.
You, you as the board may do as you will, but to me, that is not a sum that I would fret over.
So I think we have a motion on the table and seconded to approve the, the budget, total budget number proposed for twenty twenty-six, which, if I'm correct here, is a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Can you explain the difference between the column on department request and Budcom proposed? Because I, I thought we're looking at that Budcom proposed column, or am I?
I, I, I received this spreadsheet from Jim with certain numbers already filled in. So I think what he did was.
Mark, you might need to go back and check that because I may have misread that as last year's.
Yeah, that could be last year's. I think they level funded everything from last year, yeah.
Well, it does say Budcom fiscal year twenty twenty-six proposed.
Yeah, so I think.
And he, he was.
So Mark, I think, yeah, go back to the overtime line under department request. Should that say one, one, two, five?
Yes.
Okay, so fix that and then they should be equal. But that may have been my mistake in putting formulas in here.
But the four point two seven percent, I think, is, is based on the, the Budcom proposed and the two thousand, twenty-five appropriation. Because I think that's how you get to, you do the math and check, but it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I might have accidentally misunderstanding, overwritten the Budcom proposed with a formula just referring to our proposal. Because I didn't realize that they had given us numbers. I thought that was just like left over from last year, so.
I wouldn't, I would, at this particular moment, I wouldn't pay too much attention to them. We haven't had our hearings with them at all, so.
Yeah.
So fix the.
If you do department request to twenty twenty-five appropriation, it's five point oh three.
Yeah.
That's not gonna fly.
So it boils down to the OT.
Well, that and legal, engineering and survey. I mean, you look at those two areas.
Right.
Is there a difference between that? Now I gotta start looking at the two columns. Are there differences between the two? On the proposed and the request? Yeah, so for example, the, the. The only change is the overtime.
Well, yeah, so, Mark, are you working on this live or not?
It gets you four point two seven. If you use our number, that says it gets us to five percent. Correct. Okay, yeah, and all the other numbers look to be the same. Correct.
So if we adopt the overtime and do something with the engineering.
We need to cut like eleven eighty-three to get to four percent, by my calculations.
There goes your engineering.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so, because you're. I can offer.
No way.
No, I, I think what we're saying is if you, if you go to that second column where it says Budcom proposed, then, then you now are back to the four point two seven percent. And if you really care about making it four percent, it was that three hundred and fifty dollar difference, which you could take out of, I guess, the engineering. Some of that.
Yeah, the Budcom proposed just had less overtime as well.
Right, that's the only difference. But I think that's, that's how you get to the four point two seven. That, and that's what I'm suggesting. Keep Budcom the way it is. Adjust engineering down to how much is the difference? Seven hundred dollars or six hundred and fifty dollars and then we're at four percent. But if you don't think it's necessary, we'll just go with the budget the way it is.
No, you're, you're the board. You decide that. Ms. Bedard, could you come to a microphone, please?
Lady Bedard, speaking as a private citizen, I realize I may have missed some of this information in my journey. How many hours of overtime are you planning for? Or you said you would look to see about how many you'd had so far this year?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a guesstimate.
Yes, how many hours are you guesstimating?
I didn't estimate it on hours. I estimated it on the monetary.
Okay.
Just divide that out pretty quickly.
So the challenge that you would face with that is that the money that you got the last year for overtime would have been inaccurate because your hourly rate was inaccurate?
Yes, that, that's why I guesstimated a higher amount.
Okay.
That's why I said to, if I've used, I don't know, maybe a thousand dollars so far, and that's doubled at two thousand, you're gonna be fine in that line for next year.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I'm hearing a lot of talk about limiting your department increase to a certain percentage. Is that something that somebody asked you to do?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
But where, where did this proposed Budcom number come from, Mark? I mean.
I'm sorry?
Somebody from the Budcom community in prison?
I, I think I, I may have goofed that up. So Mark sent the budget spreadsheet. I did not realize that there were pre-filled in numbers from Budcom. So I put a formula in so that the Budcom number was the same as our proposed and figuring that they, then they're gonna do their process later. So I would ignore that. It should, the way I was looking at it, they would start out as equal and then Budcom would do whatever they were gonna do. So, so I was looking at one nineteen six oh two, thinking that we were proposing eleven twenty-five for overtime. And then, you know, that's the four point two seven percent. So I'm sorry if I made an error in the spreadsheet on that.
Yeah, I think we should concentrate on the department request line. That makes sense.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think we, I think we need to stick with that eleven twenty-five, not two thousand for overtime. And then, you know, like I said, we'll have to, if you're, if you're, we'll have to track it next year. And if it's getting close, we'll have to talk about making some adjustments to, you know, your, to your schedule so that we don't go over. So we're back to, so, so I would propose either one nineteen six oh two, or if we want to take a few hundred dollars out to have it at, you know, at or below four percent. And, you know, I think, no one's asked us to do that directly, but I think we've all heard the feedback from the town and, you know, there's a budget cap and we want to be respectful, even if it's, you know, regardless of what the amount is, that's the, you know, that, that's what people want to see.
I mean.
But that's why I also said, we're, we're being super conservative here and trying to, you know, propose something realistic. And I would hate to see the Budcom take that and cut something out, thinking that we've asked for more than we need, because we are absolutely not asking for more than we need. We could, we could use more, but we're trying to make, do with what, you know, the best we can with what people want to see.
Again, I, I agree with that as an extremely admirable statement and, but if I was a, a person who was doing a budgetary line and your budget increased by, you know, by, by three hundred and fifty dollars over that four percent line, I don't, I don't think I'd put a lot of weight there. I think our department.
But I, but I think there's a difference between, I, I agree, like, if I was looking at the, a total budget and, you know, some are gonna be up and some are gonna be down, it's not a significant amount of dollars. I think it's more of a symbolic, you know.
Yes.
We, we're trying to do right by the people of the town.
Yeah, but, but yet again, you'll take a, a, a bill that we have no line and just find money within the total budget to pay it. So.
That's the unpredictable and legal kind of stuff, yeah.
I know it's not gonna change for this year. And, and this is probably just me preaching. But in, in the business world, you don't budget off last year's appropriations. You budget off what you spent last year. And, and the way we do our budgeting here in this town, we base it off what we were appropriated last year. And that, that, that's why in cases like the fire department, they're asking for a heck of a lot more than what they actually spent, but it only shows up as a little bit more than what their appropriations are. Chances are, we're gonna come in at our four percent. You know, because we don't know what we're gonna spend until the year end. There.
Well, except I think, I think the difference for us is we, we really only have two major line items. Wages and, and our consultant. All the other stuff is, is pretty small. So we don't have a lot of things that, we don't, we, you know, we, we spend most of it. We might have some miscellaneous, you know, supplies and, and then we have the, you know, unpredictability of, of needing some, some assistance from a consultant, but we don't, you know, there aren't any like capital expenditures that we don't make or anything like that. We're, it's a pretty, our, our appropriations and our expenditures are pretty close.
It's real.
So Bruce, you made an emotion?
Yeah, to move, so to move this along, I'll withdraw my motion. Doug will re, withdraw his second. And what if we go with one, 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 nine, two, five, zero? That would be your three hundred and fifty dollars. If it's, Kristen writes, symbolism is important in a year like this, starting this new budgetary program or expectation of what our budget needs to be based on what townspeople voted for.
What line would you like to take that from, sir?
Just as it stands?
Yeah, just, just, just leave it at one, one nineteen.
It's coming out of overtime, Mark.
Yeah. So what do you want the overtime line to be?
One, one, two, five. One one two five.
Well, no.
Just as it reads on BudCon fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
I scribbled that out already. What is it?
Yeah, I need, yeah, I think you need to take the other three fifty or whatever out of the engineering line.
Right, yeah. Okay, take it out of engineering, yeah.
So, in engineering and surveying, we're gonna have six fifty? Six fifty. And that should bring us down to four percent. Is that correct? Didn't you do the math on that, Doug? Somebody did.
I think Paul, yeah.
Can you just repeat what the overtime line was? I missed it.
Uh, eleven twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
It's three point nine six percent.
Yeah, one, one nineteen two fifty-two would be three fifty less out of that.
One nineteen six oh.
One, one nineteen two fifty-two would be the, the bottom line number after taking three fifty out of.
Engineering.
I'll withdraw my motion to go with your number.
One one nine two fifty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
So what, what, what was the engineering line supposed to be brought down to?
Six fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, the motion includes the, um, the grant, uh, line.
Right.
They need to add a dollar.
Or three point nine six.
There has, there has to be.
Now it's, now it's one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
There you go.
All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Does anyone wanna start the roll call?
Brad, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Paul, aye.
Steph, aye.
Doug, aye.
Kristen?
Kristen, aye.
Okay.
Who were the two people that made the motion? It was Bruce and?
And I seconded.
Think that was a small. Fun, fun, fun. The other department sheet.
Yeah.
Um, next on the agenda, Tondaleen.
Okay.
Another non-controversial thing.
Is this the, uh, bill?
Um, no, you'll, we start off with the letter.
Uh, my question on the letter is for the twelve inches of, um, can't think of the word, but over the top of the, yeah, cover, thank you. The letter said that's, um, in our ordinance and manufacturer represent, manufacturer recommended, but wasn't that also what was on the plan?
Maybe.
I, I think, I think that is correct, Kristen, but I, I have not looked at the plan.
Okay, well, if that's the case, I think that's a stronger argument.
I mean, it is part of our regulations.
Can we, is it possible to pull the plan up, Mark, or is that buried somewhere deep in your computer files?
Um, no, um.
Tondaleen on that laptop.
I mean, we can do, if we're, you know, voting on the letter, we can do like a conditional approval, if that's, you know.
I can share my screen, hold on.
If you're joined from that computer. Although I'm not seeing you on the call, so I just see Kristen.
Yeah, I see organizer, Mark Kennedy. I'm on here, and I, I'm, it's, it's all through me, it should be. Well, actually, it's through this.
Yeah. If plugging it in is what caused problems before, you could join the call from your computer, mute yourself, and then share your screen, in theory.
Yeah, it's, it's on my screen, it says that I'm in here.
We could, yeah, it, if you, if you can pull it up quickly on your computer and just check, that's fine. I don't think we need to put it up on the big screen, or we can just say, "Check later," and if that's what it says, then add that to the letter.
All right.
Yeah.
Why, why don't we do it that way, Kristen?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
It's an excellent thought.
Yep, we'll do it that way.
And then with, um, not, not to jump ahead if, if we're, um, but with regards to the final point, if we wanted to go under the chair's name or planning board by name. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think typically best practice is that, that the chair signs letters on behalf of the board. Is that, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Any other comments on the letter?
No, I think, I think that was an excellent thought.
Um, so, Mark, you were thinking we would discuss the, the bill probably towards the end, non-public?
I mean, I've, if you wanted to do that, I would recommend waiting till the end of this meeting and then doing a non-public.
Correct.
Okay, so go on to the RPC book order?
Yep.
Yeah, we.
Could we just get a motion to send this letter?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion, Glenn can a, and make the addition to the letter, and then forward on with the vice chair or the chair's signature, whoever's available.
A second.
Doug? Second. Aye.
Rule Paul, right?
Yeah.
Brad, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Paul? Aye.
Steph? Aye. Kristen?
Kristen, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now RPC book order?
Yeah, we already covered that.
Yep. Can I ask why the, or maybe there'll be a, a reason for why the bill is non-public, like what, under what rationale?
Um, you'd have to ask Mr. Stevens, he was the one that wanted republic.
Yeah, the question came up, uh, but I think this really pertains to legal and reputa- reputation. So I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public or a discussion of that point.
Anybody have their book on them?
I could get mine, sir, if you would, if you'd like.
Oh, you need the reference?
Yes, that's what I was going to get.
I have it, yeah.
I did read the ninety-one A, and it does say for reputation, um, but it was.
Is there anything else on the agenda before we do that?
That is under employees now.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, Paul, a lot of times the board of selectmen will say legal. They use that as a rationale when you make the motion to go into.
Yeah, there, there's a provision under, under ninety-one.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Yeah, for, for legal. Um, but, well, I, I don't know which subdivision, I'd have to look, but, yeah, there is one for.
Ninety-one, A three, two, E.
Okay.
But, but legal, you're generally thinking of there's some sort of, you know, if it's, involves like pending litigation.
That's, that's what's being suggested here to, to the board, by, by the.
Yeah, there, there, or, you know, reputation is ninety-one, A three, two, C.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about a bill from a vendor, so I.
Well, I think we're talking about the whole ball of wax here. I mean, the, the bill from the vendor is just part of the overall discussion that has been going on here for months regarding the particular project.
Yes, but.
I, I also think we're maybe being a little premature here, because if we were to go in non-public, we would do that at the end of the meeting, because we still have a few, we do still have a few agenda.
Or you, you could come out in non-public, too.
True.
Whatever you want.
But then you have two meetings streaming. You're better off just going into it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, sorry. I'll, I'll withdraw for now.
Uh, Letty, did you have a comment?
Uh, Letty Bedard, as a private, as a resident who happened to be at the select board meeting on Tuesday, on Tuesday at the select board meeting, we had a very open and direct con- conversation with a vendor who we felt like was not performing their duties. So saying, just for reference, saying that that's what the select board does is not necessarily accurate.
Well, you use, you use the word reputation through many of your multiple tech, uh, non-public sessions throughout the year. I don't know if this one completely, yeah.
Not recent, I mean, recently, I think we've been really trying to.
I, I, yeah, I, I try to limit non-public, Bruce, as much as possible, because I feel like unless you fall within the real stricture of that provision, you should be, you know, in public. So I, you know, you say litigation or legal, but I'm not really quite understanding what.
Well, I think the, the, the applicant in this particular case has come back and saying that they do not agree with what the planning board has been discussing for improvements to the project.
And they brought an attorney to.
Yes, they had an attorney.
Night walk.
That was the orange.
And we've asked our attorney for advice.
We're, we're, okay, I, I get that.
I think there's some legal strategy the board's trying to, to speak to here, and usually you don't, uh, in terms of legal negotiations, uh, you know, you don't put all of your negotiating points, you know, out to the public.
That's true, if there's some sort of, you know, legal, um, strategy that needs to be discussed.
Yes.
But again, I thought this was.
It's a bill, it's a bill from a vendor. I mean, I think you have to, I think you have to separate out topics of discussion.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
Yeah.
Are we, are we talking about the non-public session or are we finishing?
We should finish the meeting before we.
Okay.
Yeah.
Discuss non-public.
So RPC members update, is there?
I just sort of put that in there, because you guys had the GAT hearing and wanted to hear.
Yeah, so we can probably combine these, these two items here, yeah. So we did have the GACIT hearing. Um, Counselor Stevens and DOT, they were very gracious to let us speak first, uh, out of respect for, um, the fact that we had a seven o'clock meeting. Um, we, so I spoke and, um, other board members, I know Steph spoke, I didn't really see who spoke after I left, but, um, in essence, um, at least, you know, my message to them was that, um, the, the issue with the intersection of South Road and one twenty-five is incredibly serious. It is a life or death i- issue. Um, and one of the points I made is that I think that for folks at DOT who are kind of looking at this in the abstract, it, it may be harder for them to appreciate just how dangerous it is, as opposed to those of us who drive through it every day and, and see how fast people are going on one twenty-five. Um, I mean, I've been nearly rear-ended a few, a few times, like when I have to turn onto South Road to go home, like, very often, I'm like literally pulling off the road, you know, to not get hit, because that's how fast people are going. So I mean, the, that, the speed limit's a separate issue, but the intersection i- is, it's very serious, and so basically my message to them was that all, any revenue option should be considered, um, including, uh, uh, toll increases. And, um, and yeah, uh, it was, so that, that, that was the gist of my message.
Um, I said something similar and just sprinkled in a little plea for help with funding local matches on grant opportunities. Um, I know that wasn't really the focus of this, but had to take the chance. Um, and Liz actually got up and spoke as well. She's sort of on the opposite end of the table, which is her right. She thinks what they did out there for the intermediate term solution is good and would like to see it remain, so.
How was attendance? Was it a fair amount of people?
Solid. You know, it's funny, when I pulled into the parking lot, I thought the place was gonna be overflowing, but it turned out that there was stuff going on, there, you know, I don't know, some sort of recreation thing going on. I cou- I couldn't tell what sport they were playing. So it wasn't as well attended as I thought when I pulled in, but, I mean, almost every seat was full. Um.
Good.
A, a lot of folks from town came, and also a lot of folks from Greenland came, because they also.
They had T-shirts.
Yeah, because they also have a project that they are very passionate about. Um.
Put that in the budget, T-shirts.
Um, but, so, so overall, it was well attended. I would say it met my expectations, didn't necessarily exceed them, but it met my expectations.
Good.
Doug, just to clarify, when you said all revenue sources should be considered, um, and you mentioned tolls, you mean tolls on the, on the, like, ninety-five to fund transportation projects? I just wanna make sure that's clear, that nobody's proposing tolls on one twenty-five, you're just saying that.
No, 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 no.
Revenue, visiting revenue sources.
And, and I al-. And, and, and I also wanna clarify for the record that when I say all revenue options, I, I should have been a little bit more specific. I am not suggesting an income tax or anything like that, just wanna make that clear. I'm not suggesting that. I'm looking at the camera, I'm not suggesting that. Um, but yeah, what I was focused on is, is, yeah, the toll revenue. Yeah, so, so just to clarify, yes, uh, what I was referring to was, yeah, the, the toll revenue and, and the opportunities for, for revenue there.
It was actually DOT who was, who was proposing the toll.
Increase.
Increase, because they said they hadn't.
Yeah.
Had one in, I don't know, fifteen years.
I was surprised they came out and said that.
And.
Counselor Stevens even, the words left her mouth. I was like, I'm surprised.
Which was surprising to me, a- and, and it's, it, it, the tolls are unique because it's not up to the legislature, it's up to the council, which is different than other forms of taxation, yeah. And a few years ago, Counselor Prescott, actually Russell Prescott, when he was our executive counselor, he tried to, um, propose a toll increase, and Governor Sununu basically ended his career over it, so.
Really?
Um, but maybe the tide is changing, because I think people on all sides of the spectrum recognize that we're in a, we're, we do have a revenue crisis. Um, tolls are a reasonable thing to increase, because let's face it, it affects a lot of out-of-staters, and, and, you know, like, why, why are we so opposed to taxing people from Massachusetts?
Oh, Maine doesn't have a problem with it.
Right, right.
I, I also pointed out, too, that not only does it affect our Brentwood project, but it affects a bunch of projects in our region.
Yeah.
And stressed how they are critical for the success of our region, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're delaying the one twenty-five project on the Epping side, and that's also a serious safety issue, not just for Epping, but also for folks in Brentwood who are commuting that way. Um, so, yeah.
Just for context, too, for anybody who's listening, I just wanna, you know, for the reason you're talking about something like the tolls, it's, the whole point here is there was a slate of projects for our region that were proposed and prioritized, and one of them was in Brentwood, and they were all zeroed out. All new projects were zeroed out, right, because there's.
Fully deleted, not even pushed out to the future, just delete.
Just, just deleted, yeah, so, okay.
So, so, you know, the fight goes on, there are gonna be future GACIT hearings. I plan to attend future ones, just because I, I want them to get sick of seeing me, and maybe if they get sick of seeing me, they'll do something.
Yeah, same.
Keep us abreast of that situation, thank you.
Um, work session reminder, we scheduled one for next Wednesday at five thirty. The goal is to review the draft material that Resilience put together and come with comments and be, be prepared to discuss.
And we're good with five thirty, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Morrell and, um, Mr. Falzone will be there.
Oh, great.
Oh, that's great.
Very nice.
They, they responded immediately to my, my, um, email messages and were eager to talk to you.
Cool.
Very good.
That's informational, educational, trying to get some understanding of what, um, developers look at in terms of costs to build these days.
Should we email Mark with questions for these gentlemen prior to the meeting? Would that be helpful? Or is that not necessary?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
I think they're so well-versed on their crafts that they can be able to answer any question that you may have right off the top of their, their head. And what I'm hoping, the goal that I would have for this particular meeting is for you to really lock down a number, a density number. Because that's, we really have to lock that down and give that information to Resilience in order for them to move forward in crafting these ordinances.
Yeah, this needs to be kind of a free-ranging conversation, and they'll, they'll bring up things that we're not even thinking about, so. Pause it.
I think it'll be good.
Please.
Just because I take every opportunity to disagree with Mark, I actually think that if you had pointed questions that you wanted to ask, if we let them know that, and it would allow them to bring information or, um, examples of stuff that if we just asked them at the meeting, they would have no opportunity to do. Because they're not gonna come to two meetings with us.
No.
But if we, if, if people have questions, I cannot imagine they wouldn't want to know those questions beforehand so that they could feel like they were answering them as comprehensively as they could.
And I think that's a.
When you discuss with them, I think the density issue was the, was.
When you discuss with them, I think the density issue was the, was kind of the key, the big one.
The elephant in the room.
So you probably, you probably mentioned that to them, to them anyway.
And Brett and I have had a couple of discussions, and I think he's got some poignant questions to ask on the building cost aspect. And it's legitimate. And I think if you bring that forward beforehand.
And I have to go back and take a look at the information that you gave us in the meeting. Because in a piece of it, we talked about anything to do with the workforce housing. We actually have more of a right to see what the numbers are involved with that.
Yeah. If you have, just so Glenn can prove that I'm wrong.
No, not my goal at all.
It is some days.
That's going into the official.
If you, if, this is a relationship that we have. If you send me any emails, I'd be more than happy to forward them.
Okay.
Because you're right. I know that's the right answer. That is the right answer.
Because if they do want to.
Mm-hmm. Because Joe, if he needs to take that type of information to his accountant and give you hard, hard figures, then he's probably going to do that.
Or if he wants to bring us a worksheet that shows how they established density that worked someplace, it would be nice if they had the opportunity to do that. That would give us a learning.
No, I'd be more than happy. Send me the emails and I will send them right out to them.
I think next on the list is approval of minutes.
Now, in your packet, you're going to, I added a set of minutes from the work session we had yesterday. I did, it didn't make it onto the agenda. So that's why you have three sets of minutes in your packet. And I need a motion, a separate motion for each individual set of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 4th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Doug, do you want to start the roll call?
Doug, aye.
Brett, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Doug, aye.
Paul, aye.
Steph, aye. Kristen?
Kristen, aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the site walk meeting minutes from September 6th.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The only concern I have is there was some discussion at the site walk about the gentleman's operating, and it was discussed that he could operate up until the time he got approved. And, and now we've extended his time period.
That should all be reflected on the site plan, and you haven't approved the site plan?
No, I know that.
Yep.
But he's still.
Yeah, there's kind of, there was.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, there, we don't have the power in terms of the operations. That's, that lies with the select board. If the select board wants to issue a cease and desist, so.
Is that something we didn't obtain, I guess?
We didn't, we should not have told them what they can and cannot do beyond the site plan process.
Okay, yeah. True, but, but to the, and again, I'm not aware of this. And I thought I was, you know, very clear, you know, at, I think it was a planning board, a previous planning board.
I'll speak up just a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of where it was, but I thought I made, you know, it very clear when we were speaking with their agent, Ryan, who was here, that they should not be operating. And that needed to be brought back to the, to the owner. And that if that was happening, then, you know, my intent would be to, to bring that to the select board. So, you know, if they're, you know, I don't know because I'm not there. I just drive there and take a look, or drive by there and take a look. So, but if there's evidence that they are operating, it isn't.
They were loading a truck while we were there.
They were loading.
Yeah, I think that it's in, it's in your purview to take that to the select board if you want to issue a cease and desist. I think, you know.
Yeah, all I'm saying is.
Asking nicely or having an informal conversation is, you know, the evidence is that's not having any effect. So if you want to take a formal action, then you should do that.
Right. Well, you know, and again, I was, you know, in that regard, I was taking the, the lead of the planning board as well to, to, to see if, you know, there was some thought on the planning board's part to make that, you know, recommendation. Again, I'm, I don't know if they're.
I think that's well outside of our authority because we don't, there's nothing in the statute or in our regs that would allow the planning board to authorize something pre-site plan approval. I mean, that's clearly a jurisdiction of the select board. And I think, you know, as far as planning board discussion of that aspect of it, that that ought to cease at this point. I think it'll only weaken the planning board's position on certain items that the board wishes to see encompassed by the approval of the business that's applying for this site plan. We don't have any authority to, to talk about this as a.
All right. Just to clarify, my motion was to approve the minutes of the, of the site walk, not, not asking more than that, so.
Fair enough.
Did we have a second?
Do we?
Okay, yeah. So we've concluded our discussion, I think.
Aye.
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 I'll abstain. Kristen?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the work session minutes from September 17th. I wasn't there, but I did read the minutes, and so I, so I feel comfortable making a motion.
We did not have a quorum present?
Right.
So that's why you see no motions?
Anyone second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? Letty?
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Marino, how could you approve the minutes if you don't know what they're referring to?
Well, so my understanding is that even if we didn't attend, if we're, if we read the minutes and they appear to be in order, that that is.
But how could you tell if they're in order? Because you don't know what the content of the discussion was?
I, I'm not sure I have an answer. I just didn't see any anomalies or anything that seemed out of the ordinary for work session minutes. So that was my rationale.
But as a general question about that, Glenn, you've advised us prior about members who have not necessarily attended but have read the minutes. I guess it comes from statute or some broad authority for?
My, my reason for saying that is because I've learned that at NHMA work sessions.
Okay.
It, maybe there's a distinction about making the motion on the minutes if you weren't there. I've never heard that.
So, I, I mean, I'm willing to withdraw my motion and, and I can abstain, but my, my only concern is that if everybody who didn't attend abstains, we won't have the necessary votes to even pass the minutes because we wouldn't have a quorum.
And NHMA states emphatically that you do not have to be in attendance at a meeting to vote on the acceptance of the minutes of a meeting.
If party of duty is to research that information and understand it.
But to Doug's point about, you know, if, if there aren't enough people at the meeting to pass the minutes, we do not legally have to publish minutes from a meeting that did not have a quorum. You can, it's best practice to have a record of it. You can have something in the file that says a meeting, a work session was held on this date, here's who was present, this was the topic, there was no quorum, there were no motions, there were no decisions. That's, that's good. You know, there's a record that the meeting took place, but we don't need minutes legally for a meeting that didn't have a quorum. And it makes sense, right? Like Doug just said, like if there wasn't a quorum there, there's not a quorum to, that might be comfortable voting on the minutes, so.
We not vote on them then?
So I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and make a motion to table.
Could we just put that, that comment or the summary that Mark did in the file? Just so that for transparency purposes, anybody can come by and read.
I mean, clearly, clearly it stated within those motions, that within the minutes, that there was no quorum. There were no legal motions made. It's really just a recording of what transpired at that meeting. It's really what the discussion items were and the request for you to craft that letter. I'm not sure how the board wants to proceed.
Well, if Doug reads the minutes, he could vote on the minutes, correct?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of 9:17:25.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a, it was clear in the unofficial meeting.
You want it on file, right?
Right. Just to put it in the file.
Does your second stand, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other discussion or good to roll call?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Kristen still on the call?
I am. I have not read the minutes, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, I think it's just any other business. One, I know where it's getting late. One quick thing I just wanted to mention, I learned today that I believe recipients of HOP grants are eligible for a free charrette from Plan New Hampshire. You have to apply and it's only, they're only going to be conducting like six of them over three years, and they've already done two or something. But I don't know if anyone's received any correspondence from them or the invest.
I have not. But when you say free, it's 100%?
I want to dig into it a little more and.
Because the last one, we had to give $3,000.
Yeah. I just, at another.
It was a bit of a monetary.
Client meeting, I learned about that. And I was like, hmm, I would like some more information on that. Look into it. Anyone else have any other business?
Would this be an appropriate time for public comment?
Sure.
Okay, I'm assuming you all, sorry, Letty Bedard, Middle Road, speaking as a private citizen. I assume you all saw my email. I just wanted to follow up on that. And that was kind of the point that I was getting at. You weren't at the meeting. There was no recording. There was no way for you to know what happened at that meeting. I understand that minutes are a standard way to do that. I think as a member of the public, I'm not going to be able to get here at 9:30 on a Wednesday morning. I understand that it was a work session, and it turned out that it wasn't even enough people to have a quorum. However, it was a posted, noticed meeting. And so if a member of the public had managed to get here, they would have better access to the information than anyone else. And that feels like because we have a system to help with that, even though yes, maybe it wasn't required to stream the meeting or required to take minutes or required to do any of those things. If the goal is to make these discussions more accessible to the average person, I feel like that was maybe a little bit of a miss.
Yeah, I think, I think in general, that's not a bad idea. In this particular case, we were talking about the reputation of certain individuals. So I felt that it was a 91A slash three, there was rationale for employing that statute to have a non-public discussion.
So if a member of the public had been here, you would have asked them to leave?
I, we would have allowed them to stay as we, or we would have commenced our meeting and we would have talked about what we could talk about that wasn't harmful or perhaps injurious to someone's reputation. Once it got to that point, then we would invoke 91A slash three, just as the select board does on instances where same kind of thing happens there.
I think, again, it might be a good idea. As Paul mentioned, like the select board has been trying really hard to make sure that we're only going in for things that are actually defendable.
Well, I think, I think, you know.
Whether or not there's a history of past select boards just kind of throwing legal or reputation out there.
Well, I, I think in this case, though, that we had, we were on solid ground for invoking 91A three, if, if in fact there had been public members here. It didn't require that because there, there were no public members. You know, other boards hold meetings different times of the, the day of, like the building committee, for example.
It's always streamed.
12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
I think, yeah, I, just real quick, I think, you know, we have on occasion meetings during the day on Wednesday when Glenn's there, that allows for more in-depth discussion, maybe on some technical issues, or we need some clarification on something. And they're typically only one or two people who are, you know, interested in that topic. And they're not, not something that you would normally post or stream or, you know, they're small conversations. And anything that is discussed, I think, always comes to the board. You know, whoever, if somebody goes to one of those meetings, or if it's just, you know, Glenn and a, talking to the consultant himself, there's a report out at the Thursday night meetings so that we can all hear. Because we can't, you know, board members can't get there either. That becomes part of the record. And in no case are those meetings sort of detailed technical type things or our kind of, you know, work sessions where we might do some brainstorming we've done in the past. There's no specific deliberations or motions or decisions that are supposed, you know, that are planned for those kinds of meetings. So we try to, even if there are meetings like that, we try to bring everything to these regular meetings too, and be really upfront about everything. I think, you know, you're hearing tonight deliberation about whether or not to go into non-public because we're dealing with an issue. But as a general rule, I think it's rare for us to go into non-public. We're pretty much an open book. But, you know, and I think I, I said this in my response to you, Letty, you know, there's always room for improvement. And I think this, you know, we'll think about this going forward in terms of work sessions and things. But I hope that you do recognize all the effort that we've put in to make sure that we are very open and that we have, you know, we've had public sessions and we do surveys. And, you know, if anybody has a question, they can always come and talk to people and try to give people a lot of different opportunities to know what's going on and to provide input. So I, you know, I understand this particular concern, but I hope, I hope you see as a board generally that we're, we're trying to be very open and do the right thing.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. That's good feedback, and I'll try to do better in future meetings.
It's, it's literally just a push of a button and it started. And I think the only other thing that I mentioned that has come as a surprise to me over the last year or so, as the expectation that meetings in this space are streamed more, is how many people actually are watching those recordings. Like the number of people who watch a cemetery committee meeting is astounding to me. I, I never would have known that 50 people want to know what's going on at the cemetery, but here we are, people are watching, people like to have access to that information. I think anytime we can do that reasonably, that should be the goal.
I would, I would agree with that statement that I do watch the numbers of all the videos. And over the years, they have gone up exponentially. And part of that is getting good microphone usage. When it first started, the, the audio quality was extremely poor. And the more diligent we are about using the microphones and the audio quality, the, the number of watchers has definitely gone up over the years. And it's, it's a good tool.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other business?
Yeah, yes. I'd just like to, you know, go back and revisit the letter that the board approved to be sent to the owner of Tanya Lane with a request for some remediation work there. And, you know, I've listened tonight, and I think we can break this down into different parts of the discussion about that potential issue over there. I think the town, the board made a great advancement tonight in accepting the letter that Glenn prepared to the applicant. That says a lot. It says it basically exactly what we feel needs to be accomplished in order to respond to them, based on the fact that they've sent a letter to the board asking for final bond reduction and acceptance of the road. So that's, that's a big step. So that's, that's a big step. Uh, that's part one. Part two was the, the reference that Mark's making to a twenty-seven hundred dollar bill from, uh, the towns engineering firm for work reviewing, uh, existing conditions there on the site of that, uh, plan or app, or that approval. So I'd ask members, I know how many people have it, but on page ten of our subdivision, subdivision and, uh, regulations, which is again, page ten, it's the blue pages of a book. And I think I can just read this section here that I think is applicable to the question Mark asked about, uh, funding for the, to pay that invoice. And it says here under, it's talking about the performance bond, which is still in place on that project.
What's the section first?
It's, uh, six point one seven.
Thank you.
Six point one seven, and, and it just reads as, there's a whole page on it, but I think the pertinent, uh, paragraph, uh, that we need to be aware of that would a lot help us address the payment of that, uh, invoice was it says, "The performance security shall not be released until the board is certified after inspection that the required improvements have been completing, completed in accordance with the approved plan. A fee payable by the applicant may be charged to cover the cost of professional consultation, consultation selected by the board to assist in determining completion of all required work to the construction standards of the town." So that says it right there. We can, we could invoice the, the applicant directly, uh, at this point where the invoices come in. Or we get to the point of final bond reduction, we'll again ask him to pay that invoice or we deduct that from the, the bond receipt that anything above and beyond what, uh, costs are, are associated with completion of the plan. And it's been historic. I mean, we've, we've always, we base all of our, uh, fees that we charge on the fact that, uh, the statute allows the town to recoup expenses incurred by the board in, in doing our duty, in this case of reviewing the plan. And, um, goes back to Mike Donahue, uh, Glenn, who was always advocating, don't, don't charge fees in excess of what it actually costs you. And so Brentwood's always maintained that advi- or taken that advice and we only require the developer to keep an escrow fund, you know, based on what, you know, the, the average cost of inspections are involved. But I think this part of the, our ordinance, again, gives us the authority to require the applicant to pay that bill of twenty-seven hundred and whatever it was.
Oh, I absolutely believe we can do that.
Do you, would you recommend sending an invoice or waiting and just removing it from the bond?
I think we should send an invoice, provided there isn't any escrow money left.
That's what I'm gonna have to investigate.
It, it's possible they still have escrow money.
And we could take that out of the escrow account?
That, that escrow account is for engineering work. So, I mean, it's also for me, but I'm not involved.
But you're getting that two point five percent increase.
Mark, I just, I wanna get clarification on something that you've mentioned before, like you were concerned about sending them a bill for work TEC already did or sort of already done that they're redoing, but.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I have some confusion about that because they reviewed the plans, which showed the driveways meeting our standards. And then this latest review was a field review that they couldn't do until the culverts were installed, which was somewhat recent, I think. Unless I'm missing something.
I think you're missing something. Yeah, I mean.
I, I don't because there's a couple culverts that's still in process. They haven't, they haven't finished.
Yeah, but.
Did they inspect them in the field already?
That's my point. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was my whole entire point, is that when you're inspecting that process as the subdivision is going along, they're putting those culverts in and putting those driveways in and doing an inspection process.
But were the driveways finished so that they could know what the final cover was? Cause if it was still under, cause I'm not trying to like.
No, no, you, you, you'd.
Just trying to understand.
You would have to go back and look at his review process of that development in progress.
But he, no, he signed, uh, the permit allowing them to construct individual driveways. We have copies of that in our file. Uh, but one of the things on that driveway, uh, permit that he gave out, it lists the conditions of, by which, you know, you must, the performance standards for building your driveway. And I think number eleven on that list, uh, stated that head walls are required on both ends of the culvert. And head walls, uh, would have, there would be a reasonable engineering standard for what a head wall is. It's not a five or six beach pebbles thrown at the end of each culvert, but it's a, well, Steph can basically.
The structure.
Structure, a permanent, permanent structure.
And it, didn't those say they had to meet the town's standards as well, which.
Yeah. We, we have, uh, a sign-off letter from him to accept the road. And then you sent him a bunch of questions and sent him out to look at it. And then he comes back with that report. Why wasn't that report reported from the get-go? Why did you have to send him back out after he already said, had a sign-off letter concerning the road?
I, I think, maybe we're getting into a non-public situation here.
You're gonna go down.
That road.
Much detail, you absolutely meet, RSA A three two C. Matters which discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person, so.
But to, but to back up a little bit to Bruce's point, I think if you, if you take a very straightforward approach to this and listen to the language that he read, we have every right, we had questions. We needed a s- a closer look. Uh, we needed a sidewalk. We wanted our engineer there for the sidewalk. It seems like we are perfectly, you know, in a position to, to um, charge that fee. That, that was, um, professional consultation that the board needed to move forward. And I think that's a separate question of, you know, how quickly that was done? Did we have to, did we have to put in extra effort to get that information? I think that's a separate question, but I think, can we, can we agree that the we are in the right to go ahead and recoup that fee from the applicant?
I, I would make, or you, why don't you make that as a motion, Kristen? I'll second that.
Okay. I don't know if we need a motion because we don't normally motion on all these things, I guess. I don't know, but.
Well, if it's a question, I think it's, it was some board discretion required.
For clarity, um, so I make a motion that we either use the escrow or send a bill to the applicant for the professional consultation that was, that the board required, um.
Yes, we can even, you can even cite.
On this project.
Six point one seven of our subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision regulations. So I'll, I'll second that, I guess.
Uh, any discussion? I think we've talked it through. Uh, roll call?
Aye, Doug.
Brett, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Aye.
Paul, aye.
Steph, aye. Kristen?
Kristen, aye.
Okay, um.
I don't wanna go into any further, but we did have, uh, start a discussion with our engineer on, uh, Thursday, or Wednesday morning. Uh, and we asked him some questions about continuing to do work for the board. And he was going to get back to us on that. And at the point that he comes back with some sort of letter or indication of how he wishes to either continue or not continue doing, uh, engineering work for the town that I strongly believe would be a, a non-public session at that point, but we don't need to discuss that tonight. We can wait for additional information to come forward.
Did he say when he would?
Honestly, and.
Get back?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to. We're talking over each other, Kristen.
I was just asking about the timing on that.
Well, we, we a- asked him, uh, the point blank, uh, do you feel that the, your firm wants to continue doing work for the town? And I'm not sure that he, not being a principal of the operation, uh, you know, can make a statement pl- for or against that, uh, that request. But we did ask him to talk about it with the powers to be there and to, uh, get back to us. We did not put a time limit on it. He's a professional, you know, I would expect that within a reasonable length of time that he would be back.
And we currently do not have the contract.
Right, and we did ask him also, Kristen, to, uh, at least stay with the town through the conclusion of this project. And he didn't make any statement that, uh, was contrary to that request.
Well, I think, and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, my personal take, and I could be wrong, I think he was a, maybe a little thrown off by a little bit of the hot seat situation and was probably.
Absolutely.
A little bit, um, flabbergasted or some, I don't know. I think he just was a little thrown, so that's why he probably wasn't speaking much. I don't think he was expecting that much. Neither here nor there. That was my take.
You're, you're probably correct. And I think.
So we've been talking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I just think, I, Mark mentioned something to us that believe that contract is, is up at this point.
Yep.
We currently have no contract with TEC.
So the question of him, you know, wishing to continue, I think, was, uh, integral to, you know, the discussion we had Wednesday. And something that we as a board, not tonight, but based on either our solicitation of more information from him or some declaratory statement from him, we need as a board to, you know, to be in a position to have someone representing the town, uh, down the road.
So, so here's where I'm at, at this, cause I know we've been, we've talked about this a few times. We've asked for a contract. Um, there've been more than one hot seat occasion now. Um, I think that we should put together, uh, an RFI, a request for information or interest from engineering firms. Um, and see what our options are.
Great idea.
I, Glenn, is that something you can help us with, uh, considering you're getting a raise this year?
I think I've done it like four times.
Okay. So the answer is yes, you probably.
Town engineers, so.
So we, under your term, in your fifty years here. So we can dust something off and up- update it a bit and send it out.
RFP, I thought somebody said RFI.
Uh, well, R, the RFI is, uh, some people do that as in, as like a beginning step.
Oh.
We usually just do an RFP.
Request for the vote.
So Glenn, when can you have something for us? Should we plan on talking this, about this again at the next meeting or later in October or?
Better.
I can look back at what we did the last time and have it available for people to look at, at the work session next week.
Oh, that'd be great.
Oh, all right.
Or I can wait.
Great.
Or I can wait months.
No, let's, uh, let's move this along. So, thank you, everybody. We covered a lot tonight and I, I'm glad that we were able to do this. Um, work through a couple of these issues and move forward.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for attending, Kristen.
Thank you.
Paul, did you want to say something?
Well, no, I, I, I think it's probably, we, we've kind of passed the point and it's probably moot. It gets raised at another time, I can.
Okay. So make a motion to.
I don't, I don't like to leave things hanging, so if, if something's bothering you.
No, I, well.
Put it on the table.
Say it.
No, again, I mean, you know, I, I caution against using reputation, uh, overly broadly when we're talking about performance of third-party vendors. And I think that needs to be a public discussion, in my opinion.
And when you, w- w- why would you say that? Why?
I mean, we ultimately did not go into non-public, so.
Right, I know. That's why I said the moment had passed and I think it's moot at this point.
Okay.
But tha- that's what I was going to say a bit earlier, but I, I think the moment's passed, so we're kind of beating a dead horse here.
Correct. I, I think he, under the engineer, understands the town's point of view. We did go into it, you know, think there was gonna be a lot of contention and we had some specific arguments that we were gonna make and perhaps suggest things that would be non-complimentary to his, uh, professional engineering method of operation. That's it, I'll shut up. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Who was that whispered, yes? Microphone.
Roll call, do we have to roll?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Let me think about.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right.
We're done.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. See you Wednesday.
Wait for her outside.